Good evening, everybody. It's Monday, October 16th, 2023, 6:30 PM. This is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, do you have a chance to take role?
I have taken role. Everybody is present. You have a quorum.
We have no public hearings this evening. We'll move on to personal appearances. The first item is a request of the Board of Alderman's permission for the Carney Richmond Council to close both West First and West Second Street from South Clark Street to State Route 33 on October 27th, 2023, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM for the annual Halloween blast, subject to a neighbor's sign-off sheets being turned in with approval from all residents, which I believe is at the dais this evening. And Mr. Kurt Hamilton, the Executive Director of the Carney Richmond Council, is here for that request. Kurt, you have the floor.
I don't really have any. I don't know if you guys have any questions. We've been doing this event for a long time. You know, it's kind of been Bob Tate's memory. So I kind of just expanded on that concept of putting a trunk-or-treat portion in the park so we can make it bigger, so that way the downtown businesses have more traffic flowing in to make sure that we have a lot of people kind of flowing through our downtown. So like I said, we've been doing it, the trunk-or-treat, for about four years now, so it's not really new. Shutting down the road just makes it a lot easier so cars aren't driving next to kids. So that's just kind of why I'm here tonight.
Any questions from the board? If we can entertain a motion to approve the street closures to facilitate the Carney Richmond Council's request.
Make a motion to close the streets?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations, sir.
All right.
Thanks for handling that event.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items of discussion or questions on the consent agenda this evening? See now if we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And make a motion to approve as presented.
Hold second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes as presented. We'll move on to ordinances. But we do have one ordinance to consider this evening, a motion approving Bill Number 322023, presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of property to Bison Properties LLC and approving the East Washington replat, final plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, accepting dedication of easements thereon. David, you have the floor?
I just want to let the board know that this, the plat drawing shifts the property line between the walkway and the building to the east by about a foot and a half, so we can make sure that the wall, that eastern wall, is fully within the adjacent owner's property. So that's what that plat drawing does. There's also a warranty deed that would be authorized by the ordinance actually transferring that property. We'll get those documents recorded, get approved tonight.
Any questions from the board on the proposed ordinance?
Just for the record, this is the downtown law, right?
Correct.
Because I don't know that it actually says that. So, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, with the walkway.
Yeah.
If we could read the proposed ordinance. First reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the transfer of property to Bison Properties LLC and approving the East Washington replat, final plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, accepting dedication of easements thereon.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the transfer of property to Bison Properties LLC and approving the East Washington replat, final plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, accepting dedication of easements thereon.
Make a motion to approve on second read.
Second. Pull the board, please.
Elder Woman Barker?
Aye.
Elder Woman Holt?
Aye.
Elder Woman Spencer?
Aye.
Elder Woman Lehman?
Aye.
Both unanimous, and ordinance passes on second reading. We have no resolutions to review this evening. We'll move on to items for review and presentation. The first item on the agenda is the 2024 Employee Insurance Benefit Summary and Recommendation. That will be presented by Sheila Ernst and our City Administrator. Go ahead.
This evening, Scott Heffner with UCD is here tonight to answer any questions. I just want to kind of give you guys a summary of the information that we received. So now that we have 50 employees, we actually got more than just Blue Cross Blue Shield's renewal. Blue Cross Blue Shield actually responded out and said, offered a renewal with an 8.44% increase. Scott was so kind to reach back out to them and ask them to please relook at that, and they came back with a rate pass, so there would be no plan changes and no rate increase this year. In addition to what we received from Blue Cross Blue Shield, we also received proposals from United Healthcare, from a company named Gravy, and Aetna responded, but they responded late. And so United Healthcare gave us a proposal that would result in an overall 17.26% rate decrease if all the employees that were enrolled now and the plan were to roll over and enroll in United Healthcare's. We reached out because there was, of course, Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Sometimes employees don't necessarily want to change insurance companies, and we reached out to get feedback from our employees. Overall, we did a survey, a poll to the employees, and it was very evenly matched. There is not a clear deciding response from employees. Half of them want United to stay with, or Blue Cross Blue Shield. Half of them want to stay with United Healthcare. But employees from our Employee Engagement Committee actually talked to employees, and some of the things that employees, the feedback that we received, were that employees really wanted to increase the city's HSA contribution for all employees that are enrolled in one of the city's high deductible health plans. Single individuals really like the option of a high deductible health plan and the city's HSA contribution. The current cost of family health insurance is still unaffordable for employees under Blue Cross Blue Shield's rates. 64% of employees enrolled in one of the city's employee insurance plans are currently on a Spira Care plan, which allows for free doctor visits in a Spira Care facility. That would not be an option under United Healthcare. They don't have that Spira Care. However, some, all of our employees would be eligible to do all of United Healthcare's plans. Employees that do not live in Clay County or that live in Clinton County are not eligible for a Spira Care plan. Also, St. Luke's Health System is not covered for employees that are on a Spira Care, Spira Care plan, but United Healthcare, St. Luke's would be included in the network as well as all of the hospitals that are also currently covered under Blue Cross Blue Shield. Two of the three United Healthcare plans do have higher calendar year deductibles and calendar year out-of-pocket maximums than the Blue Cross Blue Shield plans. One of the United Healthcare plans does not. After hearing all that feedback from employees and really understanding that employees wanted affordable options for family health insurance coverage, namely because it is easier to retain and attract employees, a lot of times we spend a lot of money training employees that are single when they start with the city. And then when they become, they get married or have children, they end up having to leave because they need health insurance for their family, and the cost of that plan is just not affordable when they're working here. And that's not necessarily true for non-entry-level positions, but for our entry-level positions, that is a concern. And so we might spend two or three years on a great employee, and then they grow their family, and they have no choice but, but to leave to be able to find benefits that are more affordable someplace else. Because United Healthcare gave us such a great, great rates, I was able to go in and kind of redesign the entire allocation of, to fit within the city's budget, the current budget, to be able to kind of restructure the premiums that employees would, would be paying for health insurance if the board chose, chose that option. And after I did that, we talked to, I talked to Scott, reached out to him, and he let me know that United Healthcare also said that if there is more than a 10% enrollment change, and that could, that could happen with the huge rate restructuring. You might have employees who decide to take their families and be covered by the city's plan, and if there's more than a 10% change, United Healthcare does reserve the right to relook at our, the rates that they proposed.
Why, why is that, Scott?
Well, the main reason is, think about if you add, they have that 10% margin, you add 15 people. Well, they've evaluated the risk off of our current population. So they, they reserve the right to go back and say, hey, you've added 15 people. We, we want to evaluate that risk to make sure we're going to hold that rate.
So I've just, I've just never heard of that. Is that standard, or why did we hear about that after?
27 years I've been doing this. It is standard. Blue Cross says, matter of fact, when we went to Blue Cross, we had to do health statements, but they actually require any changes. I mean, you have one person change, they require a health statement. But United's a little more lax because they're the biggest insurance company in the country. But they want to evaluate that risk.
So what happens, what, I don't think we have plans, but let's say our workforce increases by 10% from now until this time next year?
Doesn't matter. It's all about the effective date.
Okay.
So it's on December 1st. Now, they do have in their contracts that says if you have a 20% change in fundamental enrollment, they do reserve the right to come back and re-underwrite. And that's all carriers. But I've never seen it done. I've only seen it done when you have company acquisitions, things like that.
So on our example here, if the board's desire is to switch United Healthcare and for some reason we have eight-plus people join, have you seen them? I mean, is that?
It doesn't happen very often, but I've been with, I mean, I want to make sure I'm always giving you everything, so if I step on a tripwire or something, it's not a surprise.
Yeah.
So it's just one of those things that we always want to make sure you're in the know. But here's the good news. Worst-case scenario this year is pretty darn good.
If you look on, in your packet on page 39, you can see the proposed rate allocation for United Healthcare. This, this rate allocation, worst-case scenario, if every single employee who was able to have their family covered because they have a family, chose family coverage, it would fit in, into our $754,400 employee health insurance budget. And then you can compare that. Oh, and I'd like to note that if, if an employee under United Healthcare's plans, if they chose to have a high deductible health plan, then they would have a $300 a month contribution to the employee's HSA for whether your employee or family. You would get a $300 city contribution to the HSA.
Does that, excuse me, does that max out the HSA?
It does not.
What is the, for individuals? I thought it was only like $3,600.
It's going, it's 40, in 2024, it goes up to like, to more than that.
Okay.
I'll give you that in two minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I Googled it, but I don't have it in my head.
I can remember the 2023 again.
And then you can, you can flip over to page 40 in your agenda packet and see what the employee premium is, that very last column, what it would be under Blue Cross and Blue Shield. But the change would be that the city would be able to contribute $100 each month to all employees' HSAs if they are enrolled in a qualified high deductible health plan.
$41.50.
$41.50.
So essentially, what you've restructured here in the United Healthcare option is we're passing along the proposed savings to staff.
Yes.
So no matter what plan, whether it's an increased contribution or HSA or more reasonable premiums to the employees for plan, that's, that's where the saving is going to be realized.
Yes. And I believe that that will translate into a more attractive benefit and plan for employees so that we can retain and attract employees that have families.
Are there any questions from the board, to either staff or Mr. Heffner from UCD?
I assume that the networks are similar in makeup?
Because we're using the large choice care network with United Healthcare, it's actually more extensive than for everybody. Now, for First Care Blue, which is the larger network with Blue Cross, is very extensive, but United's going to be made within 2% to 3%.
Okay.
So somebody might lose a podiatrist or something like that, but your overall primaries and everything are still going to be there.
Okay.
So.
Scott, could you talk about the option of having employees, if employees' spouses are covered by another plan?
So with a lot of the municipalities I work with and employers that pay a large portion of dependents, we will do what's called spousal waiver. Like a prime example, Southern Flat Fire does this. They're a public entity, so I can share that with you. But they have a spousal waiver, which says if your spouse has insurance available through their employer, they're not eligible for the insurance here. And that's just when you're making a large contribution for that, you want that employer, employee to have with their employer. So that is what's called a spousal waiver. But it's only if they have coverage elsewhere. If they don't have coverage elsewhere, or they're working part-time for another employer, anything like that, it doesn't affect it.
I just, I just started a new job in August, and I had to sign that for my wife. I'm just acknowledging that she does not have access to healthcare anywhere else. So I think that's common.
So there, it's very common in today's time because actuarial spouses have higher claims. So there's two different types. Well, there's three. There is spouse, just excluding spouses, which I do not recommend for you all. I do that for some nonprofits and things like that. But then there's the spousal waiver that just makes them not eligible. Then probably if you're working with big corporations, a lot of times what they'll do is they'll have a separate, it's basically, all right, we're going to charge you an extra $100 since you have insurance available through your employer. You still want to be on here, but we're going to charge you. So, but normally what I would say, what I've seen around this area the most is the spousal waiver says if you have insurance, you're not eligible. So it's just a, it's a long-term. You know, what we do unfortunately in groups under hundred, we got to chase rates. You've been through this with us, you know, we go like this. And, you know, we'll go down on a good years, and we got to take those because it kind of resets us. And then unfortunately, sometimes we have bad years. I just got some renewals this morning, 39% rate increase for a school district. So, you know, we have to chase the rates when we have good things, and that's what small group does. So I always want to share with you, you know, you're looking at, you know, since I've been here, I think now, four or five years, we've had some really good years and we've had some not-so-good years. So it's a good opportunity, but it's a long-term plan.
Any other questions from the board for, on the topic? So I think you have, you're asking for two motions here in the packet, but if, or it, I personally like the United Healthcare option. I think a part of being an employer choice is providing good and affordable benefits to our, our staff, but there's a unknown, right? So is there, is there a way we could, the, the board could consider maybe attaching, you know, move forward if, you know, or, or do you think even, because we don't know if they change or what the new premium is going to be, and, and how can we approve something if we don't know for sure?
If, if the premiums got adjusted, I would be coming back to you to make, but we won't know that until after open enrollment has closed. But if United Healthcare, if you chose to go with United Healthcare and United Healthcare changed the rates, we would be back here.
We should come back to the board, yeah.
Would that, if they raised the rate, instead of giving the $300 to each employee, would you like, drop that down to where maybe it's $200 or something like that, is that what you're talking about?
We would have to look to see what those rates were. We always have to make sure that we are sticking within budget.
Right.
So depending on what they would change those rates to be, it might be more substantial than that. So I would absolutely want to come back to the board for you guys to.
If I can just share my experience, I renewed many, many years since Hewix Architecture. And this is something that you deal with, especially during, from the new renewal period through open enrollment. You have to worry about hiring new employees, all of that stuff that will be eligible. But I can honestly say I've never had an, had insurance come back and tell me that they're going to raise my rates based on somebody that we've added. Now, I'm guessing if you added somebody, somebody that had serious medical problems, that would, that would force the rates up. But in my experience, I've not ever had, had them come back and say, oh, because you added these five people, we're going to raise your rates. So you probably can speak to that better, but I don't, you probably don't see it.
I have 180 groups that I personally handle, and I've seen it happen once in the last five years. But again, my job is to make sure everybody knows what cards are on the table. So I don't think it's going to happen, but I just want to make sure.
I would also think that because United Healthcare is the largest insurance carrier, that that would, that would weigh in on that as far as spreading that out over the entire network.
You mean farts claims?
Yeah.
I wish. David, I really wish. Unfortunately, you know, I always chuckle, you're not credible when you run really well. Means you're not, they're not going to give you a big decrease, but you're credible when you run bad. So unfortunately, the only way to beat the game in under 100 is to shop and move. Now, if you're a first-year renewal, on a 0%, I'd tell you, don't do it because you're going to burn a bridge with Blue Cross, and they won't look at you again. We've been with Blue Cross now three years, I think. So we're not going to burn a bridge with them. First-year renewal, 0, you burn a bridge. And when we only have five markets really, you don't want to burn 20% of your market.
Right.
So I feel comfortable with you moving. Now, that, again, we got to reset those rates when we have the good years. I can't control what's going to happen in the future.
And I probably should also let you guys know that, that our dental insurance, we did get a 5% rate increase. All of the other rates stayed the same for all of the other plans, but.
And that was a contractual. Remember, we took a 10% decrease, and they, they were going to give us 5% back of it the next year. That was a MetLife deal that we got. So we knew that was coming.
Any other questions from the board?
Our employees were pretty equal about it. I think we do what works best for the city.
Well, I like the idea that this could actually take some, some family members that couldn't be in before, they can't be now.
Well, I like that, that you're going to have, you know, you're going to have the cheaper rates, so, you know, it's, it's a benefit for employees.
Oh, I was going to say, I do like this, the spouse waiver. I feel like that that's being responsible on our part as well. I'd be open to charging them more. I think part of the reason sometimes people are looking for the most economic way of, of covering their family. So if they have it available, and, or even if we're charging them double and it's still cheaper for them to be with us, that gives them that option. But it also protects us a little bit. I, you know, I just, I've had a lot of people who got, you know, the, the company worked to provide insurance for everybody while all of a sudden people whose husbands or wives were being, being covered someplace else now came on our plan because we were covering 100% at no bat, at all levels. And so I think we want to be responsible with how we spend our money and asking people who are already covered to stay on their own plans, I think is, is fair.
So you're saying spousal waiver and/or?
And/or.
And/or an employee's spouse that has access to other care but would still prefer to use ours as a premium increase based on more than?
They would pay a higher level. And, and that's, it's whatever the board decides, but I would be open to either one of those options.
I personally like the spousal waiver option. But that's just my thought.
I, I think allowing cheaper rates, even if we're talking about family coverage, I think can be a, the benefit in trying to hire new people. And, you know, even if, even if, I mean, I've got double coverage. My insurance is primary. My wife's is secondary. So they're only going to pay on what my insurance doesn't pay. So I don't, I think we have a, a better recruiting tool if we don't do the, the spousal.
Well, I, I want to make sure everybody's aware too that it's not just, you know, under the United Healthcare, it's not just family plan coverage that's going to go down in cost to the employee. All of them are. And then our employees that have an HSA contribution, they get $100 a month right now, will start receiving $300 a month. So everybody will, all, all employees rather would benefit from the cost savings, not just one group, which I think is important. I think the consensus of the board is, this sounds like the United Healthcare plan. What's, do we want to add the spousal waiver this year? So I'll need to add that to the motion when I read it. What's the board's thought there?
Well, let's clarify, Scott, is that a demand that we have to do that?
No.
No, it's our option, yeah.
It's just a long-term strategic, trying to help control rates because of actuarial spouses have higher claims.
Because, I mean, they have a wife working someplace that's got crappy insurance, but the husband works here, who's got good insurance. So even though she's got insurance available, maybe they don't want that insurance, they want our insurance. And if we do that, then that's forcing that person to just have to stay in a crappy insurance. That's my only thing with that.
I understand. Right, wrong, or different, though, that, that, that could make the rest of the employee's insurance increase up if she has a lot of claims, just for that example. I think, when, when you see companies look at renewals, do you think, do they get any good consideration, good-faith consideration? Like, hey, this group has spousal waivers and this one doesn't, right? So.
Again, I go back to David's, I wish.
Yeah.
But no, they're, they don't even know. We do it internally.
Yeah.
If you, and if you did a spousal waiver, do you just want them not to be allowed if they have other insurance? Or would you just like them to pay a, maybe double the premium that they would if they did not have that option? Or some other?
The standard one I see in the industry is $100. They charge them $100 a month if they have insurance elsewhere. It's not horrible, but it's not perfect. It's not comfortable.
In my opinion, let's say we have one or two of those a year, we're talking $2,400. It's not real money one way or another, but it's something, right? For the city to be compensated, I guess, for our risk.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts? So I'm going to throw the motion out there, and you guys let me know what you want added to it. A motion to renew all coverages other than employee dental and health insurance, no plan or rate change, to renew employee MetLife dental insurance at no plan change and a five percent overall rate increase in United Healthcare employee health insurance with the allocation of city and employee share premiums paid as recommended, as recommended rather, by the city administrator. Is there anything else the board would wish to add to that motion?
I'd like to go ahead and add the spousal waiver. Well, not the spousal waiver, we want the.
The fee.
The fee, the additional fee for, for spouses who are eligible to be insured elsewhere.
Did you want to take the one-hundred dollars a month increase?
Sure.
Okay. So Alderman Barker is adding a hundred dollars a month additional premium to those spouses that have health insurance coverage available through their previous employer elsewhere. Do we have a second on that motion?
Oh, second, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Passage to the administrative. Thank you for being here, C B.
Thank you.
Yep.
These are the fun ones.
That's right. Like you said, either option was good, so appreciate your work there. Uh, next item is the city completed a pit bull ordinance survey that has ended, and the results are at the dais this evening on that. We'll turn it over to Sheila Ernst and our city administrator to discuss the survey results.
So the survey actually closed on Friday, October thirteenth at eleven fifty-nine P M. And we had a total of nine-hundred-and-fifty responses that were given to our survey. There were, out of those nine-hundred-and-fifty, only four-hundred, four-hundred-and-fifty of those responses were verified responses. Of those four-hundred-and-fifty verified responses, only four-hundred-and-seven of those were actually people living within inside-city limits. And that kind of shows you, you can see, there's a little map that I put, and everywhere that it's highlighted green, you can see we have people outside city limits. The dark green, that is inside-city limits. And so the more responses that we got from inside-city limits, that's why that's darker and then kind of interesting, all the places that we got responses from. There were, there were five questions. There were supposed to be six, but I did not, there was a free-form question at the bottom that if somebody said that they had been affected by the pit bull ban, that somebody was supposed to be able to enter a free form of how they were affected. However, I didn't set it up correctly, so it didn't show up. And I didn't want to change it in the middle of the survey because I thought that it would skew. I just wanted to leave the mistake as it was throughout. So what we are missing is the free-form question that was asking if they were affected or impacted by the pit bull breed ban, how that, how they were impacted. So the results on, that are shown are only for, only registered voters inside the city of Kearney. So everyone else got excluded from this. So seventy-three percent of the people that live inside-city limits have dogs. You can say sixty-seven percent of people were very aware of the pit bull breed ban, and ten percent weren't aware at all. And then in between, you have people that were somewhat aware or a little aware. Thirty-three percent of people strongly support continuing the pit bull ban, and fifty-eight percent of respondents strongly oppose continuing to ban pit bulls. And then we have nine percent kind of hanging out there in the middle that either somewhat support or somewhat oppose. I would like to tell you guys that I did everything that I could to get the word out to people to encourage them to submit responses. We did social media. I noticed early on that people in some of the wards were not responding at all. So we put out posters with the Q R code. We also told people on the back of the utility bills. We sent two emails to people who, who received their utility bill electronically. Social media and utility bills were, whenever we would post on social media and whenever we would send out via the, the email to utility billing customers, that's when we got the biggest responses. We also did the radio and the newspaper. And then, as I said, we also tried to put flyers in where a lot of people would frequent, like a QuickTrip and the veterinarian offices and wherever we thought that people would see it. You can see question number four, if the ban is repealed, most people wanted us to have stricter leash laws. Right after that were, was mandatory registration. And if the board wanted to do these things, it would not apply to a single breed. It would apply to any dog living inside-city limit, limits.
They already have mandatory registration?
Well, there is, there is a ordinance that says that you're supposed to register your dogs.
Most people don't.
Most people didn't really know about it. This year, we kind of started advertising that. And so it really helps when people have registered their dogs because sometimes we find dogs and we are able to get them back to their owner instead of taking them to the street, uh, street department or having to take them to the veterinarian's office. In addition, it was quite, a lot of people really wanted us to have harsher penalties for owners in the event of a dog bite or attack. So, and then right under that, stricter fencing or containment laws. And then if you looked at what impact, if any, has the pit bull ban had on your household, twenty percent of residents say very positive impact. Eighteen percent of residents say very negative impact, and forty-one percent say no impact at all. And then you have some, kind of somewhat positive or somewhat negative. On the following pages, what I did is, there is, this is kind of a screenshot, so you can see on a map where responses are coming from. I, I don't think you can see it very well. So if you keep going to the next page, I actually broke it down by ward. So people that responded, I have the information by ward of whether they strongly support or strongly oppose because I thought that that would be very helpful information for the board since you are representing different wards.
And when, when it says strongly support or strongly oppose, it's strongly support the repeal or the ban that's impacted?
Strong, strongly support, so this is question three. I, this is only for question three. And question three, if they strongly support, they strongly support keeping the, the ban in place. If they strongly oppose, they strongly oppose keeping the ban in place.
Thank you.
And I don't know if you guys have any other questions or if you would like to discuss, but that's my report, Mayor.
Are there any questions from the administrator on the survey results of the survey that the board directed staff to? All right, we'll move on to the next item under the agenda, Mayor's Communications. I want to let everybody know that the, this Saturday, the twenty-first, starting at eleven A M. at the Kearney High School parking lot, the Kearney Police Department is having a Family Fun Day, starting at eleven o'clock. Free admission, Lifeli Helicopter is going to come in and land. They're going to have emergency vehicle equipment, K nine dog demonstrations. Myself and the parks staff, our barbecue team is going to be selling pulled pork sandwiches. A hundred percent of the proceeds go to the K nine fund. Our, our K nine program continues to mainly be funded by donations, private and public donations. So if you're looking for something to do with your kids, grandkids, and want to enjoy some wonderful barbecue, come out. And it looks like the weather is going to be beautiful, and it'll be a good time. So I look forward to seeing everybody there. The Family Fun Day starts at eleven. There's also a pickleball tournament going on for the same cause. If you would like to register a team, I think they have a couple of spots open for teams. But it's at the high school, yeah, high school parking lot, kind of the north area there. So, and then if you've not seen the press release from MoDOT on Thursday, November second, at nine-thirty A M., we will be doing a ribbon cutting on the I thirty-five new interchange. So really excited about that. Hope everybody is available to, to join us there. I know Congressman Graves is going to come in town to join us and be there once again without his support in partnership with MoDOT and Lexico, Clarkson, and, and staff and everybody. It's been a long time coming, so I'm really excited to see that ribbon cutting and get the interchange open soon thereafter.
They should shoot from fourteen.
For opening.
Yeah, for traffic.
The week of the, of November sixth is what we're hoping.
Yeah.
Weather-dependent.
They'll still have till, I think, May, April or May of twenty-four for final completion of, you know, some of the, like, you can't grow grass right now, things like that. But it should be open for traffic a few days thereafter. That concludes my Mayor's Communications. We'll move on to the city administrator's report.
The next regular board meeting will be Monday, November sixth, right here at six-thirty P M.
We'll move on to Alderman Discussion. Alderman Spencer?
I just wanted to give a shout out to the Kearney Enrichment Council, Kurt and his staff for the Oktoberfest. I thought it was a lot of fun.
Alderman Hall?
I don't have anything to say.
Alderman Lehman?
I don't have anything to say.
Alderman Barker?
I have nothing.
All right, could you consider a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, everybody have a good evening.